Ms. Barnesworth, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you so much. And I'm wondering, is that my bicycle advisory board group walking in? Well, out of respect for your time, we're going to let the bicycle advisory board members go first. And so with that, I'm going to call up Clark Tucker. Come on up, Clark. Welcome.
Hi.
Clark, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the bicycle committee?
Sure, yeah. So I'm a transplant from Arkansas. I moved to Spokane in June. In 2020, I sold my car to follow my wife to the Caribbean. And when I got back, I decided just to ride a bike instead of buy a car again. So last year, I rode my bike over 630 miles purely for commuting. And now that we're a little more settled, I'm interested in getting involved with my community and seeing how I can serve my community. And this seemed like a great way to do it.
You had made a comment like, what's the quick win? You want to share that with the rest of the group?
Yeah. So I think a really, I have a couple of ideas. But I think a really great thing that we could add for bicycle infrastructure and just pedestrian infrastructure in general in Spokane is improve signage along the trails to help pedestrians and bicycles cohabitate.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your interest in serving. Any man who follows his wife to the Caribbean should serve on any board he wants to. And thank you for moving to Spokane. Next up, we're going to have Claudine Zinder. Welcome, Claudine.
He's tall. I'm not.
Yes. Tell us a little bit about yourself, Claudine, and why you're interested in this board.
Okay, well, it was suggested in the elevator that you all were going to ask where, what high school I went to.
Okay, let's start with that.
So I actually grew up in Berkeley, California. And I went to a high school with 3,000 students and seven motor vehicle parking spaces for students. And so needless to say, we all rode bicycles or rode the bus. And that was kind of my start in bicycling, and I have never looked back. I moved to Spokane in 2022, January of '22, in the midst of a horrible snowstorm with ice everywhere. And I find the bicycling in the wintertime to be a bit challenging, but I just love it here. Your bicycle facilities are absolutely unequaled. It gives me great amount of joy to ride with my family and friends on the Centennial Trail, in and out of the wheat fields around, around the Spokane area. And we need more people to be doing that.
What brought you to Spokane?
We came to join the Haystack Heights Cohousing Community in the Perry District. And initially, out of our 39 households, we were surveyed to see how much bike parking we needed. And we came up with 107 bicycle parking spaces for 39 households. And so our household has four bicycles, so we're slightly above average. But we just, it's a great town for cycling, for sure.
Any questions for Claudine? Well, thank you. We look forward to you serving. My next contestant, Daniel Powell, come on down.
Hi, my name's Dan.
Did you cycle down here?
Oh, yeah.
I kind of thought by the outfit. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, I'm 63 years old, and I've lived here most of my life. So I've been bicycling for probably 25, 30 years or so. And then, of course, when I was a kid. And I live right in the neighborhood, not too far north here. And I've probably done 100,000 miles just around town. So I retired a year ago and thought, well, I need to get rid of some of my time that I have nothing to do. And so I've been going, you know, I'll take bike trips around into neighborhoods I haven't been before and all this and that. I mean, Spokane, I personally think, has a real good infrastructure as it is. You just need to find your ways through some of the kinks.
So what high school did you graduate from if you've been here that long?
Right up the street here.
Right up the street?
Yep.
Go, welcome. Any questions for Councilmember Bingle?
Sorry, I probably should have asked all you. It just hit me as we were talking. But have you seen the city's 27 by 27 plan, and what do you think of it?
I've heard of it. I haven't really looked at it. I mean, it's, I guess we're adding new bike lanes and stuff like that, which I think, from what I understand, is pretty much put on all new arterials and stuff like that. But there's a lot of, you know, secondary roads that you can take and things like that. So it's just, you need to tie that together. Me personally, I would rather go on a secondary street, maybe go a couple of blocks out of my way than be on the main arterial. But I guess that's personal preference. And I know, you know, there's different codes and rules that you all have to follow to, you know, meet codes. So the roads have to be designed a certain way and things like that. But I don't know, I just thought I got extra time, and I've done it for a while. So I'm just bringing that to the table.
Yeah. I guess what I would say on that, if you wouldn't mind looking it over and then sending me some comments on your thoughts on it. And for the two who already went, and the one yet to come, I would ask the same thing. It was, you know, a big initiative that the council approved, 27 new miles, you know, by 2027. And I would love to get your feedback on it, so.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions? Again, thank you so much for your time and volunteering.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Jared, you're the last one. Come on down. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Jared. I have lived in Spokane for not even two years, so I'm new. I picked up my bike chops in Madison, Wisconsin, which benefited from having Trek Waterloo a couple hours away. The infrastructure there was amazing. The attitude towards cyclists was unparalleled. From there, I moved to Paris, France, where I continued to refine those bike chops. The mayor of Paris is making it very difficult to own and drive a car in the city. It's making it very wonderful for cyclists to bike everywhere they need to go. Biking in France and Madison, it's not just a weekend activity or a way of physical exercise. It's a commitment. It's a lifestyle. People live and choose where they want to live based on biking. I came to Spokane, and when my wife and I told our friends and her colleagues that we don't own a car, that we bike everywhere that we need to go, they all tended to have a similar reaction. They were shocked. They said, how can you do that? You're crazy. It's unsafe. But they had an interest in cycling and would cycle themselves from time to time. So here I am, wanting to serve on the BAB because I think Spokane could do better. I think it's a wonderful place for cyclists currently. But those reactions kind of told a story, that it is not safe. Vehicle sizes are getting bigger and bigger each year. We live in a world where SUVs and trucks are the norm. And as a cyclist, those hoods are right here by my forehead sometimes. So I'd like to make Spokane safer for cyclists. I would like to re-energize the city and get people behind cycling as not just a physical exercise, but a lifestyle as a thing people do for the environment to reduce their carbon emissions. I do have a few pieces of feedback on the 27 by 27. First of all, it's great. I think it's wonderful that the city is offering a prioritized network off of arterials through neighborhoods, low-traffic areas. A few areas I think of improvement or future enhancements based off it. It gets us in a circle. And if you live on that network, it's wonderful to go around in circles on the weekend. But say I want to go to Safeway, and the Safeway isn't on that network. Or I go to Winco, and the Winco is far away from that network. It's not going to help me very much. And so I think the priority should be, how do we get people between their places where they sleep, where they meet with their family, to the grocery store, to work? Because a circle network is great for tourists who want to see the city in a circular fashion. But how do we get our current residents from places they sleep to where they need to go? So I think it slightly misses the ball there.
Thank you. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I guess I'm just frankly curious. What, you know, takes someone from Madison, Wisconsin to Paris to Spokane, Washington?
My wife. I'm not that interesting. She did her postdoc in France studying water chemistry, and she teaches at Gonzaga teaching water chemistry. So, yeah.
Great to have you guys here.
Councilmember Bingle, any other questions?
So on that then, the 27 by 27, in your mind, is this like a good starting point or a good base then to create a more practical network for cyclists?
I do. I do. I really do. And I think it re-energizes the cycling community. I think as a cyclist, it makes me realize the city sees me, sees my mode of transportation choice as legitimate in wanting to make it safer. So I don't think it's, I hope my comments aren't met with, we know how to stop it, let's not do it. But I hope we are able to build off of that network and get people cycling to work, to the grocery store, to drop off their kids with their friends or at the YMCA, you know. Yeah, I think we can do a lot more.
I appreciate it. I didn't take it negatively in any way. You know, I like to hear that, you know, not being a cyclist myself, you know, I don't have the actual experience to know if it's effective. But there's a lot of friends on the council for folks wanting to do alternative methods of transportation. So I think you'll, I think you'll like working with the city.
I think you will too. Hey, you had made one comment about the lack of bike mechanic skills. Do you want to expound on that a little bit? You had talked about there was not really a good place for people to learn bicycle mechanics and how to maintain their bikes.
Yeah.
Wasn't this easy to find in our community, which is interesting?
Yeah, so that was, that was a comment I heard. I did a, I helped organize the Spokane River Roll between 350 Spokane and the Riverkeeper. And as people were gathering, people were just talking about bikes and how much they love to bike, and that this is happening. And I heard from a few people that they wanted to bike more Fish Lake Trail, but the holdup was, what if they got a flat tire or they had a mechanical failure on that ride? And no one could offer a solution, saying, oh, yeah, you go to this place or you go to this website, sign up, they've got monthly fix-a-flat sort of workshops. And so I think in order to empower the community to bike more, infrastructure is one piece of it. Education is a huge piece of it. And I think events, partnering with schools and nonprofits could really fill the gap there.
Well, it's a little late, but for our newcomers, welcome to Spokane. We are so glad you chose to live here. And for our old-timer, not in age, but just been here a long time, thank you for sticking around. We'll be voting on you in the next coming weeks, and you'll be hearing from us. And again, thank you for stepping up to volunteer with the city of Spokane. All right. City Administrator, I'll turn it over to you. Oh, we're going to go into executive session. We will be going into executive session for the purpose of labor negotiations. No action?
Do you want to indicate that Kate Fairborn will be joining?
Yes, I'll be asking Kate Fairborn to join us. Now, we anticipate no action will be taken. 15 minutes. No.
City Council is extending their executive session 10 additional minutes until 4:10 p.m. Once again, City Council is extending their executive session 10 minutes until 4:10 p.m.
City Council is extending their executive session 10 additional minutes until 4:10 p.m.
Thank you, Council President. I believe the only thing that I have today is an update from Jacoby on the joint meeting.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, City Administrator. I am just here to brief you all on the updated draft agenda for March 31st to note that we will be having a joint CA meeting at 5 o'clock in the Council Briefing Center. That's next week's March 31st meeting. We'll start with a joint meeting with the CA to talk about some of the work that their committees have been up to. I imagine that's not going to last a full hour and a half, but just to be respectful of the CA taking the time to get here by 5, I didn't want to adjourn a meeting right at 6 so you could come to your ledge session. So we will start the ledge session at 6:30, 30 minutes later than usual next week. And we'll give that a shot and see if it works. But I just wanted to make sure you all were aware and that the folks in the room and watching online were aware that next week's meeting is going to start at 6:30, our normal ledge meeting. But everybody is welcome to also attend the 5 o'clock meeting in the briefing center with the CA.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess should we have an agenda that we're approving for that meeting so the public has advance notice?
I wasn't planning on it because it's going to be a special meeting. It's not your normal ledge session. It's just like a joint special meeting. I will get that agenda out and published no later than Friday, but maybe I can run that by the ops team on Friday as well.
Thank you, Jacoby, for the work. And actually, thank you for the little bit of transitional time from the meeting to get into the chambers to start our regular meeting. With that, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Wright to go through our amendments and deferral requests.
Thank you, Council President. The first item to consider is the final agenda for tonight. There's a potential motion to defer Resolution 2025-0018 at the request of the finance staff to April 14, 2025.
Before I make that motion, did you have any questions? We have Lyndon here. I don't know if he wanted to speak on the motion at all.
Yeah, just a quick question on that.
Afternoon. Thanks for having me. So what is happening with it is we are asking to defer for a couple of weeks. We're going to amend it and give a revised version. The homeowner decided to go with a different contractor, so the bid that they got is lower than what they had given us previously. So what we will be asking for is less than what was originally anticipated. So good news.
Praise God, baby.
So yeah, we'll resubmit it and we can address it in two weeks, if that's okay. Thanks, everyone.
Paul.
I'll make a motion to defer to April 14, our settlement for claims of damages for Dan Egan.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes, abstentions, that is deferred.
Thank you, Council. Moving on to the March 31st agenda, we have a couple potential items there. The first is a possible motion to amend Resolution 2025-022. This relates to the Plan Commission work plan. Council members Cathcart and Klitschke have a proposed amendment that would add three items, I think, to the work plan, addressing standards, neighborhood businesses, and I'm flaking out on the third one.
Land value tax?
No.
No?
Oh, heavens. I forgot to. I'm sorry, Chris. It's not coming to me.
Is it complete streets?
Yes, complete streets update. Thank you, Michael.
Yeah. I will so move the amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend their resolution for the Plan Commission updates. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes, abstentions, that is amended.
Thank you, Council. One more item, possible motion to suspend the rules to consider an amendment to ordinance C-36641. This is the mid-biennial review process. In your agenda are multiple amendments that were submitted, but I believe that this Wilkerson-Dillon-Cathcart proposed amendment is the consensus one, and I don't think the council needs to take any action on the other amendments. But obviously, it will take a motion to move it forward.
A motion to suspend the rules.
I'm sorry. It will require a motion to suspend the rules to allow consideration of the amendment.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those and Councilmember Bingo.
Can somebody just give me a run? There was a lot of amendments. How do they overlap? What are the differences?
Mr. Wright, do you want to try to walk us through this? Not try, you can.
I'll take a step back and say that the administration initially proposed this ordinance with changes to SMC 070114 and a few other provisions, basically relating to the timing of the budget, joint budget deliberations, and a request to move things from monthly to bimonthly. There were some other changes in there as well. Councilmember Cathcart had initially started with an amendment just to focus on SMC 714030, which is some lengthy language about bimonthly process and other reporting requirements. And we initially pursued a tack of having separate amendments that were out there. The upshot is that this last amendment really consolidates all the thinking between administration, Councilmember Cathcart, and Councilmember Dillon.
I'll just add on here, too. I mean, I think there was a couple of things through this process that, you know, I got a little lost in translation. I feel like after the discussion last week, we did really try and synthesize that. There were some parts that Councilor Cathcart had that I felt were left off the new amendment that adopted, so made sure that that was added. And that was specifically naming the budget director position as part of the negotiations, and then also really creating a calendar for council to present via resolution their budget priorities.
I just want to acknowledge Councilmember Cathcart and Councilmember Dillon for really the diligent work and just the collaboration. As you can see the number of amendments, there was a lot of communication going on. So all those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes, abstentions, that is amended.
Council President.
Yes.
Just a point of information. Should we make a motion to withdraw the other amendments to clean up the agenda?
No, Mr. Burden and I have talked about that, and we don't think that's necessary.
Okay.
That being no other amendments, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the March 24, 31, and the following week. We are on spring break.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of the agendas. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes, abstentions? Thank you. We are in recess until 6 p.m.
Nice.